All right, my people, it's already day. Let's get everybody, let's get everybody in and out as much as possible. We have Clerk Jacoby on the phone. Clerk Jacoby's out of town, but she'll be doing a roll call from out of town. So we're gonna call the regular council meeting to order for Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at seven oh-two P M. We're doing one more time meditation. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Mayor Nigerson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martin.
President.
She said president.
Councilperson, I can hear you. Councilperson Erbom is not there yet?
No, he's not here yet.
Would be Councilperson Lightfoot Ward?
Yes.
She said yes.
Sure to that.
Yes, she said yes.
Would be Councilperson Winters?
Here.
From also person from the red hair, Kenny Jacoby, Dennis Kirk, which he has moved to the challenger and goes a better going rate.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that, Madam Clerk.
Erbom is outside.
Erbom's coming in right now, so for the record, Erbom will be coming in right now. Next, we're moving to approve of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Councilperson Lightfoot Ward and second by Vice Mayor Martin.
Correct.
All the favor say aye?
Aye.
All the folks say nay? There are none? Next is good in welfare. This right here, you guys, is if anybody wants to come up and talk about anything on the agenda, on this particular agenda, you will also have a chance to talk after the agenda items or resolution. It's for the first good in welfare. If you have any comments there, that's for that. I do have to say there's one resolution that has a wrong name in it, and we're gonna change that. It's had a misspelling also, we'll change that in the resolution. Just a wrong resident name, that's all it is. We'll change that. Any other good in welfare for this particular agenda? Our agenda items. Seeing none, moving on. Consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I would like to pull F five.
F, which one?
F five.
F five. Okay, so we'll pull F five. I want to say that we'll pull F five. We'll make that the last item, so we'll bring that down to resolution G four. Okay, so that'd be G four. I'm hearing nothing else. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Before we do that, to the, without pulling the tree grant eighty-three, is it possible to just request that they no longer use their website that they have on their hands without pulling agenda?
For the tree grant or for the company as a whole, for landscaping? So let's go, let's go, let's talk about that during the bad good in welfare?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got you. Seeing here nothing else, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Martin, who have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Erbom. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call for consent?
Winters with a second.
Oh, Win- oh, oh, Winters. Oh, sorry about that. Councilperson Winters. Sorry about that. I don't have eyes back in my head sometimes. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call for consent agenda?
Roll call, Councilperson.
Yes.
Councilperson Lightfoot Ward. Councilperson Turner Ward.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yeah.
Mayor Nigerson?
Yes.
Will you pass this question?
Perfect. Thank you very much, you guys. Yes.
I believe we have the engineer, so this is that we see that was in. Maybe not. Okay, by all means, but they did, because they were planning to attend and perhaps didn't make it because of weather, but the first man around the out item from this election.
No problem, thank you. Moving down to resolution ordinances. Ms. Hammond, can you please come up to the microphone, please? We're first going to have everybody who will be talking about any of these resolutions, these site plans, the roof material, the garage conversion, the new site plan. Anybody who will be saying anything about any of these items, if you're gonna get up and comment about any of these items at all, if you feel like it may, please stand up, raise your right hand. Stand up, raise your right hand. Anybody else? Do you swear to God that what you're gonna say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Either take an oath or affirmation. See, I do. I swear. Thank you very much. Don't sit all down. I appreciate that. We're gonna move on. Like we said, we're in the resolution. So resolution G one, the first item is one seventy-five Northwest Eighty-Sixth Street Roofing Material. I don't believe the client is here, but I'll go. She's walking in right now. Ms. Hammond, from the, from the committee meeting, have there been any changes, adjustments, or conditions that were put on there?
There have not. This is the same exact application that came before the planning and zoning board, and the recommendation is still for approval.
Thank you very much. I know that we did add, you guys saw, we added the pictures. The pictures were part of it. We added that, so that was good. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Do I have any questions or comments from the, from the council? G one. Do I have a question or comment from the council?
Yeah, just really quickly, I did speak with the, one of the companies that she's possibly going to work with that works with the material that you could provide for her. They came and looked over the material at my home, and they said it was valuable and usable for her house. It's not the full amount for her roof, but I believe they said they're gonna work with her to make sure everything can happen, and finances can happen.
That'd be very much appreciated, that Councilperson Winters. Anybody else from the council? Hearing, seeing none. Anybody in the audience for this particular item, one seventy-five Northwest Eighty-Sixth Street Roof Materials? Hearing, seeing none. Going back to the council, do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Vice Mayor Martin, who have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Winters. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call, Winters, G one?
Roll call, Councilperson Winters.
Yes.
Councilperson Lightfoot Ward?
Yes.
What did she say?
She said yes.
Councilperson Erbom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yeah.
Mayor Nigerson?
Yes.
Will you pass this?
All right, I just wanted to say for the record that I will accept the staff recommendation for the record, and let me read that really quick, Madam Clerk. A resolution, just to say, a resolution of the Village of Elbertown Council of Elbertown, Florida, of the Village Council of Elbertown, Florida authorizing the approval of a variance for roofing material which does not comply with section five dash two-three A. Cement or clay without tiles required, exceptions of the code of ordinances at one seventy-five Northwest Eighty-Sixth Street as requested by Georgia Campbell, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for an effective date, the count was five zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We're on. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're on to the next, G two. G two is eight-eight-five-zero Northeast Fourth Avenue Garage Conversion. This is a resolution of the Village of Elbertown Council, of the Village Council of Elbertown, Florida authorizing the approval of a variance for a garage enclosure conversion which does not comply with section five dash six-six Garage Enclosure of the Code of Ordinances at eight-eight-five-zero Northeast Fourth Avenue as requested by Ariel Echec, Echow. Providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for an effective date. Ms. Hammond, what is the staff recommendation? Have there been any changes or adjustments since the committee meeting? I know that committee meeting, that individuals aren't here, but you guys can stand up real quick, so we see where you are for your garage conversion. They did come for this meeting, all right? We appreciate you guys coming for this meeting. What is the staff recommendation and what?
Yes, the application remains the same as approved by the planning and zoning board meeting, and staff still recommends approval for such.
Thank you very much. I know that they weren't in the committee, but were there any comments or questions from the council for the applicant for, for this particular item? Hearing, seeing none. Any comments or questions from the audience for this particular item, garage conversion? Hearing, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve resolution G two?
So move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Martin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Winters. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call for G two?
Roll call, Councilperson Winters.
Yes.
She said yes.
Councilperson Lightfoot Ward?
Yes.
She said yes.
Councilperson Erbom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Nigerson?
Yes.
Will you pass this?
Thank you very much, and I will accept the staff recommendation into the record. The next one is resolution G three. This is for one-eight-three Northeast Eighty-Ninth Street New Site Plan. This is a resolution of the Village Council of Elbertown, Florida granting site plan approval for new construction of a two-story residence at one-eight-three Northeast Eighty-Ninth Street in Zone Three. Suburban residents in the village of Elbertown, an application by Marina Blang, providing for findings, providing for appeal, providing for an effective date. Ms. Hammond, has there been any adjustments since the committee meeting, and what is the staff recommendation?
There have not been any changes since the planning and zoning board approval, and the staff recommendation still remains to approve.
I appreciate that. I'll accept the staff report into the record. Do I have any questions or comments from the council? Hearing, seeing none. Do I have any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing, seeing none. Back to the council. Do I have a motion to approve resolution G three? Moved by Councilperson Lightfoot Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Martin. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call for G three?
Roll call, Councilperson Winters.
Yes.
Councilperson Lightfoot Ward?
Yes.
Councilperson Erbom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yeah.
Mayor Nigerson?
Yes.
Will you pass this?
Thank you very much. Let's move on to G four. This was for the municipal payment of Village Council. Vice Mayor Martin, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to pull this item, just because it is such a substantial change, I feel like residents should get a second opportunity to chime in, provide their thoughts. My main question is how we landed on the numbers. The first time I saw it was part of this package, so just wanted to get a better idea of that.
Okay. How you doing, Trung Kya? And this is a resolution of the mayor and Village Council of Village of Elbertown, Florida, adjusting municipal payments for the mayor, vice mayor, and Village Council members, providing for an updated compensation structure, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. All right, so the way this came up, and so I'm sure everybody have other questions, but the way this came up was that we've been at the three thousand dollar level since nineteen ninety-two, and so once you look at that, and you adjust that for today's time, it goes to seven thousand dollars for the adjustment. And I was kind of looking at it not only for today's time, but since it had been changed since nineteen ninety-two, I felt like we probably won't change this for another twenty, thirty years. So I was kind of projecting, will it be a fair amount, just so we could solidify, you know, into our charter. Well, we solidified by resolution and solidified to our charter, so then we won't have to do it again, and it probably won't be changed for another twenty, thirty years, like it hasn't been changed since nineteen ninety-two. So thinking ahead, I thought that I was gonna keep it at seven thousand, which was the adjustment, but I just rounded it up to ten thousand for the council. The way I got to the vice mayor and the mayor position was because I felt that the seats and the importance of the seats and the work that comes with the seats just kind of demanded just more from it. The vice mayor's, the vice mayor's seat, I put where it was because the vice mayor is besides the manager, besides the CFO, and the mayor, the vice mayor is the only other person in the entire community that has access to the finances. The vice mayor's the only one, and so that's a good responsibility, which is how I got there. And then the mayor's seat, I put that there because of the top responsibility and also because of the amount of hours in Elbertown you have to work to be successful as a mayor. You know, for those who know, you know, you do have to work a minimum of ten to twelve-hour days to be successful as a mayor, every single day. That's because Elbertown's so small, we don't have assistance. We don't have help. We don't have those type of things. So you do have to put that time in to be successful. Now, you could say as an individual, you could say, well, you know what? I don't get paid for that, therefore I just won't do it, but that goes to the character of a person, right? I mean, do you really want, like, you know, your city to struggle like that? Do you really want your city to, you know, fall apart because of you just feeling like, well, I don't get paid for that, that's not my job, so that's not what I'm gonna do? And so that kind of deals with, like, you know, the person that individual is. And so when you look at the amount of time, you know, since I've been mayor, and like I said, it's the only way to be successful around here, and I mean, I can start to list off a number of things since I've been mayor that, that, you know, I've worked on and that the village was going a different direction and that was turned around. You know, I don't wanna embarrass too many people, you know, here or whatever, but I could start to list those things off. But being that's the case, I just felt that even at that price or the compensation for the mayor, the forty-nine, I felt that even at that, with the, you know, with the minimum ten, and it's interesting because me being with my OCD, like, I've kept, like, I've kept, I've kept the notes of all the hours that I worked every single day since I've been mayor. Like, I have it in an Excel sheet for every year. And so my lowest amount, there were two days in the past five years that I worked six hours. That was for two days. It was two separate days, two separate years, but I looked at it, reading up into this, I went back and looked at all my notes, looked at all my Excel sheets and stuff like that, to see all my hours that I worked. The average of the time that I worked every single day, including Saturdays and Sundays, was twelve hours. My longest was nineteen hours. Okay? If you guys know, whenever, which I'm gonna start to do again, whenever hurricane season comes around, I get that pile of sand delivered, I'm the one that's here three in the morning, two in the morning, packing all the sandbags, delivering to every household who needs sand, and all those type of things. So that's just one example. There's so many different examples, but that's how I kind of just, since got to that, like I said, that forty-nine, for the amount of time that I've worked over the past five years, that's nowhere close to full-time. That's still part, that would still be part-time. And when you break it down, I actually worked fifty-seven cents an hour as well as fifty for the past five years. Fifty-seven cents an hour. At three thousand a year. And I think a lot of people just don't understand. I think part of the problem is that when you don't not have something, then you don't recognize what you don't have. See? There were a lot of things that were protected from this village, like in this village, that could have gone wrong. But because those things never went wrong, people don't know about it, and since people don't know about it, you don't get credit for it. But they don't understand the hard work that went into that to avoid those huge pitfalls that could have went wrong in the village. And so I think that's a huge thing that a lot of people just don't realize or don't recognize, but there's, there's so much more to it, but I'll leave it there, and I'll do rebuttals from the council.
I don't, I don't have a rebuttal. It's kind of a complex statement. I do think you work tremendously hard. I just wanna make sure that the number is right size, no matter whom the mayor is, and this is concomitant with maybe there being a mayor in the future that maybe doesn't have just kind of a personal work ethic that you do, so I just wanna make sure the process is good and that the number is reflective of the larger community and, and what may be in the future beyond you after your mayor, although I think you might be mayor for quite some time.
All right.
You're still young. But also, when I think about my thoughts about the compensation, I do recognize that there is, it is time for there to be a change. I think that it's obvious by the fact that most of the time when we seats become available, there are few people to sign up to do what we do for the compensation that we currently receive. So something does need to be done, I think, to incentivize there being some new ideas or new entrance of people that are interested in occupying the seat. I just wanna make sure that the number we land on is a number that takes into consideration the thoughts of the community members, and in addition to that, is reflective of kind of what this region, what other council members in this region are compensated. So I didn't have an idea of whether or not, or where we fell on that spectrum. I thank you for the input, but I'm still trying to wrap my mind around that you want the feeling of, yes, there does need to be a change. How much of a change?
Yeah, I agree with you, Madam Vice Mayor. I think also you guys keep in mind that, so I think one of the first things we need to do is find a floor. Because one thing that I was considering from the very beginning was, you know, was that I spoke to different individuals or whatever, and everybody had great ideas. I was surprised that there were a lot of residents that were like, man, like, you guys be bored, you know, you guys, like, you should be getting bored in that there. But, but one thing that I was thinking about to implement also was, kind of, Vice Madam Vice Mayor, to your point, was whatever we decide, if we decide a floor, let's say, if we decide, let's say, let's just say for a second, if we decide the floor is three thousand, we're gonna stick with the nineteen ninety-two numbers or whatever, we decide the floor is three thousand. If we decide that, then whatever we decide, if there is some type of, you know, budget shortfall in the future, if there is some type of thing where a future mayor does not have the same work ethic or something like that, if there is a hurricane, if there is something like that, then every year during budget, we can reanalyze, like, what we do everything else, you know, so it's not set in stone like it's been since nineteen ninety-two at the three thousand. We could also put something in there to where not only can we analyze it every year during budget time to see how our budget looks, but we could also do something to where if there ever is any type of emergency or something like that, we can first pull from the council payment budget down to a floor of three thousand or seven thousand. So we can do that also. We can implement something like that also, which is like a stopgap. So that's something else that we can do. Also, just for payment, if everybody's like, you know, payment, where is this coming? So when I first came, became mayor, Madam Manager, we didn't have any commercial permit fees. Didn't exist. We have residential permit fees for new structures, new building structures. We didn't have commercial permit fees. And we had individuals that were gonna be coming in, building these commercial product, projects, and they were gonna be building them at the residential structural permit fee level. And so for huge projects, like the Cavista, hint, hint, they were gonna be able to build that for, like, the residential building permit fees of like ten thousand dollars for that huge building. We scrambled, myself and the manager, we scrambled. We did commercial permit fees, put those in place for the first time ever, and because of all that, and everything came together, we just got back, we just added seventy-seven million dollars of property value to Elbertown's property values. Cavista just came through, seventy-seven million dollars. We have about one million dollars being added to the budget this year. Because of those commercial permit fees and everything being built correctly. So like I said, there's a lot of things that, you know, we do and we've done, and the individual who did that was, the individual's name Mark Jean, who I went to college with, the University of Miami. When I first came to this mayor. So there's a lot of things that we do that benefit us that we still talk about. Like, I'm not a PR person, so when I get done with something, when something's accomplished, I'm just like, what's the next thing to do? I don't put out a press release and say, I did this. That's kind of how that goes. There's a lot of other things. I mean, I can go down the list, like, there's some things, like I said in the very beginning, I don't wanna embarrass other individuals, but there's some things that which, which show, shine the light on some of the lack of stuff that happens as far as some other individuals, but I wouldn't do that to them in a public arena like that. But let's just say, I work on a lot of stuff for a lot of individuals' job descriptions on a consistent basis. Is there any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
Doctor Whitefoot, I commend you for taking the helm. I commend you for bringing it forth to the public. But I also need to let you know that Elbertown is always seen as a small village. Matter of fact, it is the smallest village in Miami-Dade County, notwithstanding we have the same responsibilities as the largest cities. Keep that in mind, and do your research. What the mayor is saying is that too many years, this council has not done any kind of increase that validates the work that we put in. The mayor has known very much now, all throughout Elbertown, because he is like he is. People have never forgotten me when I was mayor. When my counterpart at the end came on, they were very astounded about what she does as living, for living. It's more than just coming to the council. It's sharing for what we're doing in the community. It's sharing for that it hasn't always been about the money. We have purposely kept low lying in terms of, of our experience here on the council. We invite you to come and take our seat, if you would so please. But at the same time, be aware, we're all citizens, and the only thing that we're expecting is that our city is not tangled up into some kind of ridiculousness that the news is getting a bitch chavain about. All we wanna do is do the work that is necessary, that, that our attorney will tell you. For far too long ago, what we do now was nowhere near what we used, used to do in years gone by, and he's shaking his head because he's, he's been around too. So we thank you. If nothing else, pass the word. We could not do it without you. The mayor's comments were very rarely spoken years gone by. We want you to be transparent. We want to be transparent. We want you to ask this question. We want you to know what district you're in. I'm over here in, in, where are we? You, you, you are one over from me, right? We are here because we wanna be here. I thank you all for the telephone calls. You just have basic questions, and I don't mind it, so keep doing that. Call any of us. We all can be talked to. Call any of us, and we'll be happy, we'll be very happy to make you aware of where, where we are. As far as the village manager, one of our best, my goodness, one of our best city managers, village manager that we've ever had. And I'm not gonna tell you what a biography is, but I know why we got the best that we could get. Mr. Geller and I came on together. I had no idea about this. It was Mr. Geller, our attorney, who said, Doc, and I wasn't even quite finished with the doctoral yet. He said, Doc, it's your type of carefulness. They pushed me out the door. The people that were here before, they pushed me out the door, and that's how I became what I am today. Because this is still we, the people of the United States. In order to do what? Form a perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic equality, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, do ordain and establish. That's how our constitution of the United States starts out, and it's a preamble, and we follow it too. So thank you, Mayor, forgive me, and I'll tell you that people know it's not about the money. It's about the, what, what is responsible, what we have to keep in place, what we must do in order to maintain the smallest village in Miami-Dade County is Elbertown, Florida. Thank you all.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Councilperson Lightfoot Ward. Any questions or comments from the council?
Sure, just to say that I've only been aware of this for a short time, but my first thought was just an understanding of partially why the council's compensation has been so low for so long. That's mostly due to the fact that almost all responsibility in the village really does rest on the shoulders of the manager. The manager is certainly the most critical position in the village, without a doubt. a doubt. Um, uh, and so, um, so, you know, over the years, on the council, I haven't thought too much about the compensation package, other than acknowledging that it is exceptionally low, I mean, it's essentially a volunteer position, uh, being on a council, but again, because of the size of the village and my decision to join the council in the first place was for the fact that I had found a neighborhood that I didn't think I would find, um, and so, uh, and so that was motivation enough to, to join the council. Um, I have said for many years, I wish that there would be a minimum of two people running for every seat every cycle, I think that's the way our, uh, local government becomes strongest, is by, you know, uh, constant engagement and, uh, and influx of new people, new ideas, new energies, all of that, so, um, uh, I certainly have my opinions, uh, if you know me a little bit, then you know that I'm a very opinionated person, um, but I try to stop short of, uh, the type of arrogance that makes me think I'm right all the time, so, um, so I do think that this compensation, this compensation increase, uh, is certainly warranted for, I would say, the mayoral position for sure, um, and then it doesn't seem, you know, uh, su- super extravagant, the proposals that we're talking about, they don't seem, you know, to be, uh, to be outrageous numbers, um, and so if that does encourage more participation, uh, in the local government, then I think it's a good thing. My initial reaction was just a little bit of, I understand we're trying to have this discussion now because budget season's in September, um, and then, uh, part of my brain is like, well, we should discuss this in, you know, incredible detail, and then for the next budget season, you know, have proposals ready. Um, uh, so I don't know exactly where I stand right now, but, but overall, uh, I think it is a long time overcoming, I looked it up, nineteen ninety-two, US dollar versus to twenty twenty-five US dollar, we're talking two dollars twenty-nine cents, so a hundred and twenty-nine percent inflation on the US dollar since nineteen ninety-two. Um, and, uh, and so technically that would put us at, you know, I don't know, seven, moving from three thousand dollars a year up to close to seven, I guess, so, uh, the jump to ten is not, uh, uh, crazy. Um, and, and so I would, I am curious to see if this does do something to potentially, uh, foster some more engagement from the residents and, uh, a desire to be on a council, um, so we'll see how that goes first.
Thank you very much, Councilperson Erbong, anybody, questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Chris Rogers.
So, as everyone's heard me speaking for, I'm more about statistics and numbers than emotions here, and just pulling up the numbers on the internet and saying that's the percentage of how much you make or how much we had inflation, doesn't actually prove what has actually happened. So I wanna speak tonight about what was proposed for compensation adjustments for the council or vice mayor. It's not about enriching ourselves, it's about aligning compensation with realistic realities of inflation, workload, and what else, future. The last raise of three thousand dollars annually was made nineteen ninety-two, so over thirty years have passed without adjustments despite exponential changes in our economy, our workload, our cost of living. This adjustment did not calculate for ten years after the installment either, when it was made in nineteen ninety-two, let alone thirty-three years. So back in ninety, ninety-two, when the three thousand dollar annual council pay was set, did you know a home costs seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars annually, but today that same house sells for one point two million, that's a one thousand five hundred fifty-five percent increase. Back in nineteen ninety-two, a dozen eggs for forty-nine cents, and as of last March, at Publix in Miami Shores, it was thirteen dollars a dozen, that's a two thousand five hundred fifty-three percent raise. In nineteen ninety-two, a Big Mac meal costs a dollar ninety-nine, and now, if you go on Grubhub, you can look it up, it's fourteen dollars and nineteen cents, that's a six hundred thirteen percent increase. Even in my own market, where I live, I live in, you could buy a Stradivarius for six hundred and ten thousand in March, in March of nineteen ninety-two, and in March of twenty twenty-five, they sold for twenty-three million dollars, that's a three thousand six hundred sixty-nine percent increase. So when we average these four categories, housing, groceries, restaurants, entertainment, we get an average increase of approximately two thousand ninety-eight dollars over thirty-eight years, this translates to a compounded inflation rate of about nine point one percent per year. So using this compound rate, if we recalculated nineteen ninety-two council pay of three thousand dollars, we would find that in twenty twenty-five, right now, it should be sixty-seven thousand dollars, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars per year, just to retain the same purchasing power. This figure purely adjusts for inflation, not for the increased workload, the increased population, or the increased responsibilities. And I know the mayor is doing so many responsibilities, more than most mayors have to do, which is required for a smaller cities, I find myself also working extra and trying to do more for the city than I even had time for. So though this is a smaller city, the more work the elected officials have to do, um, to compensate for lack of employees and assistants, the more we need to understand, we're not even on the right track of, with the numbers that were given a few days ago for today's meeting. Um, so, but this is half the story. In nineteen ninety-two, Elbertown had fewer than twenty-five hundred residents. Today, with the development of the Cavista, the historic high-rise, we're coming up with projects, we're probably, and a coming up project for about twenty acres, we're looking at this standard rate, which the Cavista, I'm using as my precedent example, a hundred and ten units per acre, so we got twenty more acres about, this means we got up twenty-two hundred more residents that are gonna be here in the next five years. This means a lot more work, this means doubling our responsibility. So applying this population growth factor to the inflation would adjust the sixty thousand dollars eight hundred salary to one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred per year in today's dollars. However, reassure everyone, I'm not requesting an increase, but a hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars would be thoroughly accurate, considering the amount of extra work and the amount of inflation we're having to deal with today. So our current council salary remains at three thousand, the same as it was three decades ago. So back in nineteen ninety-two, after serving a full two years of a council term, you would have six thousand dollars. Did you know you could buy a brand-new Hyundai for six thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars in nineteen ninety-two? This means after two years of working on the council, you could buy a car. Since nineteen ninety-two, you could buy a vehicle after two years of the council, a new one, how to use one, I need a one, we need to provide one too. So just imagine that after two years of council, you'd buy a car. Today, you know, we can barely cover basic expenses, when I leave my work, and I leave my business, and I come and I do work for this, I lose more money per, per, per council meeting when I leave my business than I make per year. So this is not for our financial benefits. Um, so I did more research on this, and I found that other cities in Miami-Dade with larger populations, um, they also had more staff, more assistants of the council, they had extra offices and places they could work. Um, so Miami-Dade, Miami pays its mayor approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars, and the council fifty-eight thousand two hundred, with car allowances, with personal staff, with security support, which are armed guards, and then North Miami pays the mayor eighty-nine thousand eighty hundred eighty dollars, and council members seventy-seven thousand nine hundred ten dollars, with full staff support, travel stipends, and discretionary budgets, and of course, they have so much to work dealing, will take care of them, the secretaries of our help, compared to what a small city has to do, we need to do everything ourselves. Uh, Doral compensates his mayor eighty thousand six hundred ninety dollars, plus pension, executive perks, and the council members receive fifty-four thousand three hundred ten dollars. Miami Garden pays this mayor eighty thousand dollars, the council members forty thousand dollars. Meanwhile, Elbertown is still at three thousand dollars. And while each council member receives two thousand dollars discretionary budget, we have no staff, we have no benefits, we have no support system. So despite elected officials carrying out more direct work themselves due to limited staffing and sourcing services. So I'm gonna make a proposal, which is a raise, and it's not a gift, it is, of course, a correction rooted in math, history and duty, but to ensure it is deserved by proposed accountability, council members who miss regular meetings would face a ten percent reduction per absence. They would also have a, a legacy rate of three thousand dollars, so if they miss all their meetings, they're still gonna make that three thousand dollars that they made in nineteen ninety-two, but I want to encourage that everyone shows up to every meeting, but I want more than this. Additionally, I want the council members to be able to engage more in the community, I wanna see at least one town hall annually, I wanna see two large-scale projects and events per year put by every one of these council members and mayor, that we actually bring the community into normal events and bring us together as a neighborhood, and we're small enough to be just an increment, we are smaller than some of these actual HOAs. So this, this way, we can complete at least one town hall, one major project, and at least two citizen-facing events every three months. So this one is sure compensation reflects real contributions, not merely presence. The increased compensation will directly impact residents positively and equipping officials with necessary resources to enhance community engagement and governance. My proposal aims to elevate public service, not reward inactivity. If we want dedicated, qualified leaders to run for office, we must recognize the work, time, and responsibility service truly demands. So as far as compensation adjustments I'm gonna propose, I'm gonna propose also increasing the discretionary budget as well, because two thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-two couldn't buy you very much. So right now, that two thousand dollars, uh, if I take the same nine point one percent increase, uh, per year, is about forty-five thousand two hundred dollars annually. So this funding is strictly for public events, town halls, community engagement projects, and things necessary to run this council, and the initiative's directly benefiting residents. So this necessary tool enables the officials to fill the additional responsibilities that we put together in the previous statement, so they can maintain their salaries if they're putting together community events, taking care of our community, using that fund to take care of Elbertown residents, but you need to have that money to be able to take care of Elbertown residents, which is why the discouraged budget needs to be increased with the budget of the council and mayor. So, but even with this adjust, adjustment, the combined salary and budget represents less than one third, I'm sorry, less than fifty percent of our one point one million annual revenue increase we're about to have, um, which preserves ample resources for infrastructure services, citizen-focused investments while creating and maintaining neighborly, citizen-friendly village. So in summary, um, this is, what I would like to make is a motion after I hear from everyone else, and we basically talk about it together, because obviously I probably have different ideas than others on the council, and of course, the, the village, and we wanna make sure we hear everyone's voice and do what's best for our village. So number one, I would wanna adjust the mayor, vice mayor, and council compensation to be equal at sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, based on this inflation data that I've showed. I do not want to have a different price for vice mayor, mayor, and council, because I do not want us to look like if I wanna run for vice mayor or mayor one day, I'm trying to get a salary that raised. I want you to know that I wanna do it for our community, not because of the money. Number two, increasing this, um, the mayor, the vice mayor and council discretionary budget from two thousand forty-five thousand two hundred, to mistake, to actually maintain that historical three to two ratio, right now, we have a three thousand dollar income per year with a two thousand dollar discretionary budget, so it's a three to two ratio, so basically these numbers I gave were still with the exact same ratio, so we can support public engagement. Number three, I wanna establish mandatory quarterly participation requirements for the council, the vice mayor, the mayor, that we do at least one town hall, one major project, and two public-facing events every three months, so that we are able to keep the village active. We're not gonna do this all in the last month before budget, we're gonna do it over time, giving our, our citizens the ability to enjoy each other's company, enjoy each other's benefits, and have a, a wonderful city that works together. Um, so I wanted to also, um, institute as well, if we were to go with something this high, ten percent salary deduction for those who miss meetings, twenty percent deduction for those who miss their quarterly requirements, which could be the town halls or the different, like, facing events, while ensuring no councilperson's salary falls below the legacy rate of three thousand dollars per year. This also needs to be applied with that if there are emergency funds, emergency budget things that need to happen, including hurricanes or some, let's say, emergency sinkhole, it comes out of our budget first, and it goes to prepare whatever needs to be done for the city first. Um, so of course, we still would not fall below the three thousand dollar per year legacy rate. And then number five, would we ensure that all active elected officials, mayor, vice mayor, councilpersons, receive the same salary as I said in the first one, so that the discretionary budget amounts upon completion of their full workload, compensation should not vary by title to discourage seeking higher office solely for the purpose of pay increase. So these proposals will ensure fair compensation for service, guaranteed accountability, and protect unexpected budget needs and provide the necessary tools for councilpersons to better serve our growing community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilperson Winters. Um, just let me say first, uh, we can discuss the, the, uh, the council, uh, payment, but discretionary is not part of the resolution, and the resolution was, um, advertised for, for municipal council payment, so we can't add that to the resolution right now, but we can discuss that, um, when the budget comes. Um, any other questions or comments from the council before I go to the audience?
Yeah, just to clarify, uh, Councilperson Winters, what, for, um, for, you're proposing a single compensation rate for all five councilpersons, and what is that rate you're proposing?
For all five persons, I am suggesting sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollar rate, based on discretionary numbers that I've phoned, which does not include the amount for doubling the population.
That's a question. Thank you very much, uh, Councilperson Winters, Councilperson Erbong. Any other last questions or comments, I'll come back to you guys, any last final question or comments from the council before I go to the audience? You're saying, uh, going to the audience, do you guys have any questions or comments about this particular item? Uh, come to the microphone, say your name and address for the record, the floor is yours. Councilperson Brunson, I see you, my brother, I got you in the last getting welfare. I remember, I remember you wanted to come and say something, I got you in the last getting welfare. You, you gotta go? Oh, you gotta come up soon?
Yeah.
You gotta go? Alright, alright, give me a second, give me a second, give me a second.
Good evening, council, Monique Martin, Monique Martin, Agent Martin, four six five Northwest Eighty-Nine Street, um, thank you for everything you guys do, you work hard, it's a thank you job, um, everything sounds reasonable to me, except, uh, going aside sixty thousand per, uh, a credit, that, that, that's totally out of pocket, and we could hire two other city managers, and you guys would have to do nothing. So, um, I, I, I think the city manager we have is fantastic, uh, if the number needs to go that high, maybe she needs consistent, but, but, sounds totally out of pocket to me, but which you guys are, um, proposing, seeing, seeing. Alright, so thank you.
Clerk Jacoby says hello.
Hello, we say hey.
Clerk Jacoby, that's, uh, that's Marvin's husband.
Hi.
We love you, my brother, we love you, we love you. Uh, anybody else from the audience? Name and address for the record, come on up.
Good evening, Jay Redbrow, two two five Northeast Eighty-Sixth Street, I am all for getting you an increase, I have seen the value of the work that you have done. I do not agree with a level, um, reimbursement for each one of you, I see a tier reimbursement, mayor, vice mayor, and council. Um, not saying that you are not equal in doing your job, um, the mayor, I recognize all the work that you have done, bringing in those sandbags, my house is flooded right now with this rain, and those sandbags from last year, they're protecting my garage right now, okay? So, go for it. However, there's this however, where is the budget right now? Is that million dollars in permanent fees included in the budget right now for you to reconsider come September, when you do the new calendar budget? Is that when the new reimbursement is gonna come out?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, balancing the budget, and I know many residents here are new, what's going on with the hurricane reimbursement? Last time, I haven't heard about this in two, three years, the last time, there was a four hundred thousand dollar loan, and we were paying interest only. So is that million dollars going to help pay for that?
I have, we have news on that.
Well, no, no, it's not paying, I know.
We have news on that, what I would say is, you, we're gonna have a whole breakdown on that at the budget workshop, which is the first Tuesday of September.
Okay.
Alright, come to that, you'll get everything, because we're gonna look through all of that, it took a long time to go through all of that, so, so, I got, but if you wanna go before, you can just call me, and I'll, I'll call you.
I know that the development over here at the trailer park is not even starting yet, and there's definitely good income coming there, permit fees and taxes and so forth, so I'm all for it, um, and I know that the launch project is also another good return on investment, where are we with that? I think I hear there's a lawsuit somewhere, we need to know who, where, and what, and if we win, the individual that filed the lawsuit should pay back the city for legal costs.
Well, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Okay, and finally, I see in the manager's report that the code enforcement officer currently has seventy cases open. I would like to see an Excel spreadsheet of address that's been sanctioned, owner that's been sanctioned. owner that's been sanctioned, individual that might have wasted our code enforcement officer's time in filing frivolous complaints. I will tell you, my house has eight complaints. Two of them were valid, which I pay my fine. Okay? But eight complaints that actually cost the city time for code enforcement to investigate. So we would like, personally and other residents that I know of, would like to see a list of what complaints have been filed, where are we, open, closed, how much you collected. Okay? And if there's any frivolous complaints, you know, we have to get to the point of charging the individual a fee. Additional revenue for the village. We're small, but I'm looking at ways of making money. That's all I have to say in my three minutes of time.
Appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. We'll have those answers for you soon.
I do want to say, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, for the hurricane funding, he had been paying us down. In fact, all the money was reimbursed from the loan, and we're at a hundred, a little bit less than a hundred thousand only for that loan at this point.
Right.
And as for your public records request, we'll work on that. And I'm going to contact you to get further clarification so that we can narrow it down a lot more.
Right.
Yeah, well, he's asking is the hundred thousand dollars that's left, can we pay that down and get rid of it and finally, and like, and just close it out? That's what he's trying to ask, which is why I've said, so it's a lot of discussion, that's why I said we should have it.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else, good and welfare, say your name and address for the record. Mr. Brunson, I got you, thanks, you're going to be here, I got you.
Hi, Noel Pace, two zero six Northwest Ninety-first Street. You know, I see, you know, the need to potentially adjust compensation structure. And I definitely agree, I mean, Omar, I know how hard you personally work and how dedicated you are to the village of El Portao. I know how my spouse.
I was going to say, we know how America feels, like, in El Portao, you have to really, like, be hands-on in El Portao.
Well, absolutely. And the thing is, is that I appreciate the council, mayor, manager role. I also appreciate sort of the size and scale of our community. But I mean, the underlying theme here from all this discussion tonight so far is about revenue, right? And how can we generate more revenue? Now, I appreciate us trying to compare our village with much larger municipalities that have a much larger tax base. Mainly, one big element of that is that they do have a much larger business community, and they are paying much greater commercial taxes. I've always advocated, not only as a resident here, but as a business owner, that El Portao should probably do more to be friendlier to its business residents, be friendlier to its business community, to encourage businesses to start here and to locate here. We have great, you know, we're at a crossroads here in Miami-Dade County. I mean, more people pass through here, I think, on a daily basis than only a few other intersections, especially on Northeast Second Avenue and eighty-seventh Street, as well as right outside our border, Biscayne Boulevard. And so anything the village can do to create incentives to bring business here, and to do that will help increase the tax base. I do think, as we compare, now, we compare ourselves to Doral, we compare ourselves to some other, I can compare us to Biscayne Park, where the council draws no salary whatsoever. Okay? But they do provide for expenses for the councilpersons that are active. And I do lament the fact that we no longer have a Fourth of July barbecue here. I do lament the fact that we no longer have a Halloween block party here. Like, I mean, there used to be a lot more activities for the community to sort of, you know, cross-pollinate and to, you know, build strength in community that just seems to have fallen off of the calendar or radar screen. And so, you know, I do advocate in terms of balance that making more money that is, that for active council people to generate more interest in the community, as we said, would probably be wise. I know, Omar, you walk door to door in our community all the time. I think, you know, your budget should definitely be greater than somebody else's. You know, there's a lot to do there. And I think that, you know, there should be some level of increase. I've never encountered thirteen dollar eggs. I was at Publix the other day, I think it was like six bucks, which is still a lot. But, I mean, for me, I definitely want us to be reasonable. And I do second J R's comment, though. I am really concerned about some of the policies of the village and and how code enforcement is being executed, especially against the business community. I'm concerned that, you know, it's an uneven application of the rules. I mean, there's one particular individual in this community that seems to have the code enforcement on speed dial and filing all kinds of complaints all the time. And I mean, there's a cost to that. It's not just a cost to the village and code enforcement. It's a cost to the businesses, it's a cost to the people here. I mean, in the end, like, you know, if you're acting to get paid and you're doing what you're supposed to do, that's fine. But like, don't throw stones in a glass house, if you know what I mean. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Let me shake that, Mr. Pace. Before I go to Mr. Brunson, are there any last questions or comments about this particular item from the audience? Hearing seeing none. All right, Mr. Brunson. Mr. Brunson reached out to me, come on up. Mr. Brunson reached out to me, and he said, "Mayor, I have something to say." And he said, he reached out to the police department, and for our police department. But let's do this, you're coming up, and I see somebody's coming up, I believe, with you.
Department.
Yeah, so listen, let's do this, let's do this. Do we have any last questions or comments from the council about what we're going to do about the payment? You guys have your minds made up, are pretty good? Yeah?
Yeah, we did have a few things I wanted to respond to.
Okay, so let's do this, then we'll come back to the discussion. All right? All right, Mr. Brunson. Hold on one second. He called me, listen, hold on, Mr. Brunson called me on, what was it, Sunday morning? And he was like, "Mayor," he was like, "When's the next meeting?" I said, "Oh, it's Tuesday." And that's all it was, he's like, "Okay, I appreciate it." You can have the floor, Mr. Brunson.
You didn't see that mic.
What were you like, I think I have, councilperson, former councilperson Erbong said?
Oh, he heard you just now, Jacoby.
Oh.
Well, good evening to the council. Good evening, mayor, good evening to the residents and attendees for the night. I think the night just fell into a more appropriate night for me to be here, what I'm about to do. Hearing everything about the council as a former councillor, Obrion Bronson, seven zero Northwest eighty-seventh Street. As a former councillor, a long-term resident, El Portao, over thirty-five, thirty-six years, over forty years of being here. I do love El Portao. I served when you guys served. You know, I really was surprised to hear about the three thousand dollars, but, you know, it's still there, that's dead. I know, so it should be an increase in that, you know. I don't know the right number right now, but I do think at least a million, as devil's, or something like that. Because you work hard, you all work hard. You know, we're not full-time, but we work hard. You know, and to say something about the mayor, what I'm about to do tonight is like a tooth part. This mayor of ours represents us very well. When we're sleeping in our beds, you know, going on vacation. We had members of the village of El Portao residents who passed away. And I called him up last night, said, "Hey, you know, your resident has died." And he took out his own personal time, you know, go around to the house and visit the family, sit with the family, and attend some of the funerals when time was there.
There's been a number of funerals that you reached out to?
A number of funerals. They reached to me, and I reached to my, to my mayor. I always call him my mayor. And even hospitalization, when you hear about somebody in the hospital, even myself personally, I experienced that, going through surgery. I looked up and who I see, my mayor.
No, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Hold on, no, you don't get across. And I don't want to get emotional. Councilperson Brunson was dealing with very bad form of cancer. He didn't know I was going to show up. His wife called me.
How you doing, sister back there?
His wife called me. He was going to ring the bell, just finally cancer-free, after all the hurt and pain he went through. And I snuck into the hospital, and I was right there by the bell. So when he came from the back, I was the first person that he saw. And I had it on video, and we both got emotional as soon as we saw each other. And that's something that I'll never forget. I'll never forget that morning, it was early in the morning. And I remember I was the only one sitting there, and it was so early in the morning, there was nobody else there in that ward, pretty much. There was nobody else in the seating area, and I was sitting right there by the bell. And I can, I'll never forget your face when you came out for your final checkup. And I was right there. And I'll never forget that. Sorry, my bad.
Thank you. Trying to stand up with you, man. You've been, we've been there together. He used to get over there and tell me to be quiet over there on the side. The mayor and I used to sit side by side, and he'd say, "Hey, be quiet, Brunson." I was one of those, you know, "Hey, be quiet, Brunson." Anyway, we got a lot of coverage. And I'm not doing this tonight because of what he just said about me personally, I experienced it personally, but I witnessed it personally done to other residents of the community. I also witnessed the police department chief, he was supposed to be here tonight, Mendez, but he didn't know, because he was trying to get the paycheck, and he didn't do it. But anyway, we have officers standing at this present as well. Because it's not only from me, it's from the chief of police, it's from your manager, and it's from myself as a resident of El Portao. And then we wanted to... Can you stand up for me, sir? Hold on, Jacoby. And I'm sure everybody has read this. And I was on the council, I didn't need it. It reads, I'm going to just show you my paper. And I'll read, I'll read off the... It says, Omar C. Nicholson, Ph.D., outstanding achievement award. As the mayor and chair of the El Portao Public Safety Committee, Mayor Nicholson, you were the driving force in cleaning the house and changing the internal and external environment and cultural El Portao Police Department. I would also know that we are.
Yes.
Our former, former there, husband is, she couldn't be here tonight.
Yes.
So you see, it's all on the team, and my attorney and my brother from Texas, who came down to help me with this, to hide it from you. All right? So it's, Mayor Nicholson, in partnership with the village manager, met with members of the police department individually and in a larger group to listen to the officers and bring them to sentiments of the council. And the community ushered in a positive relationship and mutual trust after several years, several years of very low officer retention and negative working environment due to high turnover and extremely limited resources. I don't know what that means. Mayor Nicholson advocated for the fortified El Portao Police Department with allocated funding that brought about much-needed and celebrated police fleet, much-needed law enforcement equipment and staffing training that has brought great change on the streets of El Portao with more reduction in speeding, with traffic calming and speed reduction through ticketing and speeders and speed blocks. Mayor Nicholson is an avid supporter of the officers, supervisors, and chief Mendez, and always seeking ways to advance the smaller department to become the best it can be. And as a former council member, Obrion Bronson, village manager Christina Alou, and Alejandro Mendez, chief of police, we would like to present this to you with a heart of gratitude. It looks familiar, man, but I'm going to thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it. And like I said, it's more deserving, you deserve it. And the timing tonight, I just say God was in the room because I didn't know what the agenda was going to be. And then the agenda turned out what you're talking about. Then I come up here and say, "That's an honor to this man." So thank you, mayor, for what you do, council, I've been there. Thank you all for what you do. We appreciate you, love you, residents, continue to thank you all.
Send a picture real quick in front of that. Tell me, brother, tell my brother, send a picture in the front real quick. Come on, you guys. Brunson, come on, say it. We got, we got more space on the other side, somebody on the other side.
I got everybody. One, two, three. Where's the El Portao? Hey, there you go.
How about Omar?
Okay. One, two, three. Omar.
Hold up the phone, you got Jacoby. Thank you, guys, I really appreciate it. So you know we can all just thank, so you just don't get good. Hey, your thing, your thing. Apologize for leaving. Get ready to rest and be in the holiday. Very nice, very nice. Hi. How are you? You doing okay? Yeah. No. Trying to stay out, trying to stay out.
Public comments for the ladies?
Yes, all right.
All right, so we're back, what are the comments you guys?
One last accolade for Mayor Nicholson. So if you're new to El Portao or you're unaware, not only is Mayor Nicholson the mayor of the village of El Portao, he's currently also the president of the Miami-Dade County League of Cities. Which of the thirty-four incorporated municipalities in the county of, you know, millions of people, El Portao, as you heard, is the smallest village. We've had two presidents now as mayors there. But, you know, what that does is that shows that there's strength in numbers. And so Omar goes out and networks with other municipalities and is able to achieve economies of scale with scarce resources. And that was also another element of helping the police department, you know, go from good to great here for the past number of years. And so, if you don't have public safety, you really don't have anything. So that's why this is such an important thing.
And Kirk and I would, one word to, not only do we have the president of the League of Cities, of all the cities.
Yep.
But our manager.
That's right, our manager.
And he's also president of the city manager group for Miami-Dade County. El Portao is super, and I don't remember any city ever having a vote at the same time much as one the size of Los Angeles.
That's right.
First time ever, first time in Miami-Dade County.
Biggest little village in Miami-Dade. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pace, we appreciate you. All right, going back to the council, you guys. Councilperson Winter, I know you've got a couple things you want to say.
Yes, sir. Well, congratulations, that was a pretty, that was a nice honor.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of what some of the residents said. And what, the first thing that's very interesting tonight is that we have some really amazing residents here that are at every single meeting. You know who you are, we're going to vote for you, for you, for you. And you're always here, but you guys didn't stand up to rebuttal it, which makes me think that maybe we're doing something right with this one? I'm not sure. But I thought it was very interesting that you guys remained silent, and I appreciate that. I mean, you worked hard to put it together. Thank you for that. So the first thing I want to say was, the proposal that I had originally included that discretionary budget. And as the mayor said, because it wasn't on the original email that went out or on their website, we can't actually vote on that. So it changes my original idea. So this proposal would be basically a full compensation. So this proposal would be basically a, a full compensation level, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars out of the one point one million dollars of additional revenue we're getting per year for the new property, and which is still going to be less than one-third of the amount of that, um, income coming in. So, and of course, if we do vote on this base salary correction, it would, uh, it would make the financial impact even smaller. So it's modest, calculated investment in active accountable leadership and not luxury expenses. Next one was about spending the money on a manager assistant. Uh, this money is actually the way I set it up for the benefit of the residents. And if the residents aren't getting the full amount of participation from the council or from the mayor, they're, the council, the mayor, the vice mayor will lose the money. And it will allow us to have more, uh, opportunities for events and ways we can use that, um, to help out our citizens. So we're not choosing between leadership and service or, or strengthening of, uh, both. But as far as the assistant for the manager, hiring an assistant sounds helpful in theory, but, and, but in practice, uh, I'm not sure if the manager actually would want to share her office space with another full-time employee, as there is no space for new employees. The village manager had to move into like the closet of the police station just to have an office space, and there's simply no room, is from what I understand. So I would say that this proposal empowers already elected officials to take on the needs directly and deliver results directly with the council. Now, we're not shunning her having an assistant, I'm just saying that I don't know if she wants to share an office with someone else. Uh, last portion is about other cities and other municipalities and how they have a certain budget. I, I named five or six cities that have between eighty and a hundred thousand dollar budget, they are larger cities. But these municipalities, these, these cities actually also have so many people underneath them, so many little cogs in the machine that are running everything. They don't have the same amount of responsibilities, yet they're still making more than I'm proposing. They're making eighty, ninety, sometimes a hundred thousand dollars, and they're, they, they basically just have to make decisions and someone else pulls them out. Um, I can tell you, I've, I've met with the different residents, I've gone out to the properties, I've, I've walked this area, I've come here. The manager's kicking me off this diet, saying I can't be here this often, 'cause I'm always here working for the city. And I think that every one of these council members and, and vice and mayor work more than we actually understand that we do. So we, uh, the full-time planners, the city manager team, assistants, the separate label departments, you know, we, we don't have that big entity, big city feel. Uh, so it's actually a reverse correlation when you're looking at the amount of work we have to do compared to the size of our city. So El Portel elected officials do legwork, um, from organizing events to contacting agencies to walk into the streets of residents. Uh, so my proposal will be basically cost less than hiring even a bunch of full-time staff members and, and adding more area to our staff. And I hope I got everyone's, um, answered everyone's questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilperson Winters. Any last questions or comments from the council before I ask for a motion?
Yeah, just a couple comments. So, uh, so as I said, the, the, the ultimate responsibility for the operation of the village rests on the manager's shoulders. It's a super master responsibility. Do not innovate her in that task. Um, uh, and we have had our differences, however, we do have one of the most organized, one of the most competent managers we could have, truthfully. Um, and, um, and so, and so I spent one term as vice mayor myself. Um, and it's, it's clear that I have, that the order of responsibility goes, manager, it's really the pre-charter positions, so it's manager, attorney, clerk, right? And then we have a mayor who is unbelievably engaged with our village. Uh, but the truth is, uh, at, at, at a lot of points, those become choices of how involved a councilperson, a mayor, vice mayor gets involved in everything, right? And so, um, uh, I enjoy it when the council comes together to discuss planning and, uh, thanks to that effect, because when we get here to the council and come up with a plan, and say, okay, this is what we're gonna do, it's gonna be infrastructure, public works, it's gonna be co-reform, it's gonna be, uh, whatever it is, um, uh, then there's a concerted, um, effort and understanding behind that effort. The manager gets to work and puts everything in place and, and makes it happen, right? So I do think that there, I do agree with the resident AR that there should be a tiered, uh, compensation here because the mayor, regardless of how involved the mayor chooses to be, the mayor's responsibility is greater than anybody else's responsibility on the council. Um, the vice mayor, uh, ma- Mayor Nicosson made an excellent point earlier in terms of why the vice mayor, even though, uh, assuming things are going well, the vice mayor is not necessarily, uh, the person who's carrying the responsibility uh, in the event that, uh, a responsibility is needed to be taken care of, and we do not have the manager or the mayor, uh, you know, fully, uh, capacitated to take care of that, then the vice mayor suddenly becomes an incredibly important person in the village. So, um, so I certainly, uh, understand that line of thinking as well. Interestingly, I, uh, am glad, so I am very glad for, uh, Councilperson Winters' illustration of, uh, cost versus, uh, you know, inflationary values, uh, strictly looking at the value of the dollar versus the cost of goods, right? Um, and, uh, I am now reinforcing my beliefs tonight that, uh, that reflation is a significant problem in this country. Trickle-down economics clearly is an unbelievable failure and a joke of an argument to make the worst. It does not, where it's six, two thousand percent inflation on goods, um, when the true cost of producing them, um, has not, has not moved. I, I work in one of the most, uh, origin of meat grinder for twenty-five years. I challenge anybody to survive hospitality longer than six months and maintain your dignity or your home. Uh, you're going to find that it's incredibly hard to pay rent, and you're gonna find that you are, in fact, an invisible human being. And so, um, and so, uh, I've been running costs, uh, in a kitchen uh, for a bunch of years, over a couple decades, um, in different capacities and understanding, uh, the wholesale cost of goods that are then turned into retail products for the consumer. Uh, a few weeks ago, I asked anybody in here, if any of you work in retail, and I was the only person who raised my hand. I was not asking that question to throw it in your faces, that you guys don't work, uh, with blood, sweat, and tears, but, uh, it was actually to see if anybody else was paying attention to what's going on in the economy. And that is, that I sold all of my product last December. I sold it all last December. I haven't sold anything this year, guys. It's freaking July, let me tell you. Every retail company in this country, they are going to start laying off people soon. Because here's what happened, your top line is sitting twenty-five percent below where it was last year, and all the executives use a year like this to reset. And all the residents of the U.S., fifty-two percent of the adults in this country are functionally illiterate. Fifty-two percent, that's a twenty-twenty-three number, functionally illiterate. That means you can have people with a college degree who still can't read a car loan, okay? That's what functionally illiterate means. Fifty-two percent functional illiteracy in the adult population in the U.S. That's how we arrive at the situation we're in right now. Nobody knows anything, alright? So credibly valuable demonstration on reflation, that's startling. For, anyway. The ten pounds for the three councilpersons is perfectly reasonable as a start. We can have these discussions, as the mayor said, going on in the future. I am curious to see if this increases the interest in the residents to join the council or not. That would be my primary goal for accomplishing this. Because the truth is, the four of us, okay? I'll say the three of us, because again, the vice mayor sits in a position of readiness, right? The other three of us, we are vol- we are, we are part-time councilpersons. We are, we, it takes time, and it takes brain space, and you sit there, and you find yourself in traffic, and you're just running over details about what's gonna come in the meeting. It, it does, it is time-consuming, it invades your brain space all the time. Uh, this council is constantly present on my mind. Uh, however, it is a part-time position. And so, um, and so while I would be, in theory, excited about, uh, a, a massive salary increase, uh, I actually agree with Resident Pace's comments that we could take a lot of the money proposed for, you know, a massive increase for the council and get the manager additional resources in terms of assistance and things of that effect. So as it stands right now, with having little time to think about it, because I've only become aware of this recently, um, I'm comfortable with the numbers proposed. I'm curious to see how it works out the next cycle, if we have more interest in people running for seats, which would be long-term benefit to the health of the local government, to have more people involved, more people interested. Um, and so, uh, on the other hand, I'm also fascinated by the reality that my dollar, uh, uh, you know, by my inflationary standards of a hundred and twenty-nine percent as far as the value of the dollar against the inflationary cost of goods i- is certainly something that we should all be reflecting on, almost on a daily basis.
Thank you, Councilperson Urbom, appreciate it. Um, any other questions or comments from the council before I ask for a motion?
I'd like to say something to Mayor, Madam Director. Um, thank you very much for your kind words to the council who, um, support me getting an assistant at some point. Um, I don't care if I have to share the office, long as I have substance to help. Substance, and not somebody that's making copies and staple papers, but I appreciate your, you know, consideration. And I support your, you know, your...
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Director. Um, any other questions or comments before I ask for a motion? Um, Vice Mayor Martin, um, I put in a stipulation that we will review the council, uh, payment every budget.
That, that would be, that would be amazing. And similarly to Councilman Urbom, I, I really hope it incentivizes more robust participations and new voices, new ideas coming forward. Um, hopefully that does it, because this is a tough job, and we are all definitely doing more than we are getting, um, paid for. Um, so I, I don't want my questions to diminish that, that is definitely a fact. Um, yeah, and, and that's, that's, that'd be great if you could add that.
Absolutely, Madam Vice Mayor. Uh, any last questions or comments before I ask for a motion?
And to be clear, this is a motion on F five, as presented, not...
Motion on F five, as, as presented with, uh, uh, the inclusion of the stipulation that every budget season will review to see if we're either raising or whatever.
Perfect. And this is the take place starting in October twenty-twenty-five, is that right?
Oh, it's the new G five, yeah.
Just final question, this is, so, uh, in the event that this would pass tonight, that the, the new compensation would begin in October twenty-twenty-five.
The new compensation would begin, uh, next month of August.
Okay, okay, so, so, back to one of the original questions then regarding the, the monies from Cabista. Because what we did, what we already accomplished tonight in the, um, uh, in the, uh, my god, one second. Alright, okay, I'll get it, okay. In the consent agenda, what we accomplished already tonight in the consent agenda is to put the monies in the general fund.
That's automatic, that's the...
Ahead of any required approval that would be needed in the budget process of September.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
There is no necessary approval beyond what we've already approved tonight in the consent agenda to have that money be in the general fund.
Absolutely.
That's what it says, Councilman, that's correct.
Very good.
It transferred now, again, the money is used for lawful purposes.
Right, the purpose, right.
Specified, there's, there's plenty of purposes.
What I'm trying to discover is, is the money gonna be there in August? Or do we need to waste it?
Let me, let me, let me explain, so nobody gets confused, you guys, let me explain.
Yeah.
The Cabista development funds are moving into the general council as of the close of this, there, it's already done. As a matter of fact, once the resolution passed, it was done. We're also getting an additional million dollars to the budget because of the seventy-seven million dollar property assessment that has now come onto the books of El Portel, on top of the seven hundred thousand of Cabista development.
So that additional, we'll see in the new budget, right?
Exactly, so there's...
Yeah, no, I wasn't trying to be confusing, I was trying to be clarifying.
Do I have...
I'd like to make an amended motion.
Well, there's, there's no motion yet, so...
A motion amending from the original document that was given out.
The original, it was the new G four, I believe it was, right?
Yeah.
We moved it to a G, G four, it's a new G four, so the G four, municipal payment of village, of village council, um, and your motion is what?
Uh, so I'm gonna move that, the, we adopt the following compensation performance structure for all the elected officials, mayor, vice mayor, councilpersons. Uh, compensation adjustment, increase the annual compensation for all active elected officials, mayor, vice mayor, councilpersons, from three thousand to sixty-seven thousand eight hundred based on the verified inflation since nineteen ninety-two, not taking into fact that the population is doubling, which would increase that even more. Number two, quarterly participation requirements require all active officials, all active, all active elected officials to complete the following each quarter. One town hall, I'm sorry, fall, complete the following at least once per each quarter for the whole year. One town hall, one major project, and two public-facing events, minimum. So these must be evenly distributed throughout the year to ensure continuous, continuous public engagement. Number three, accountability and deductions. Apply ten percent salary deduction for missing regular council meetings. Apply twenty percent deduction for missing quarterly participation requirements. But no official salary shall ever fall below the three thousand dollar legacy rate. Number four, emergency budget clause. In the event of a catastrophic or unforeseen budget shortfall, any necessary reduction shall first be applied to the compensation and discretion budgets of the mayor, vice mayor, and councilperson before considering customs essential services. And of course, number five is equal compensation clause for all. To ensure that upon full completion of all requirements, all active elected officials, mayor, vice mayor, and councilpersons receive equal compensation in discretionary budget amount, sorry, not, equal compensations. This is to discourage title-based pay incentives and encourage service-based leadership. So we're not trying to get into a position just for the pay. That's it.
Alright, so we have a motion by Councilperson Winters. Um, do we have a second? It's going once, going twice, do we have a second for Councilperson Winters' motion? It's going twice, last time, third time, do we have a second for Councilperson Winters' motion? Got Councilperson Lightfoot Ward?
You say don't do something, am I correct? I'll count the first, don't do what? You say don't do something, what is the don't do about? Because that price was smaller than me, I'm trying to...
I'm trying to figure out what portion of don't do something. Uh, I made stipulations so that the elected officials are constantly involved in our community. So if you do not do within every quarter something, which includes a town hall, a major project, or a public-facing event, either, like, the mayor does his Christmas event, or we do an October event with Halloween, or we do a fourth of July barbecue, like I said earlier. Basically, requirements that you have to do in an event every quarter. If every one of these five officials does an event every quarter, go again, five events every three months, getting our neighbors actively involved. And then the, um, accountability on that, that, basically, if you don't do it, you're gonna have a reduction in the salary. And this way, by the end, if you actually didn't do everything you're supposed to do, you'd be a negative salary. But I made a three thousand dollar cap because that's what it was in ninety-two. Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to hear it twice, if you can't say that you didn't understand what you were saying. Either do it, what you're saying, either do this, or don't do this, or there's no monkey around. That's what you're missing, yeah, basically.
I'll go back to the second, ask for the second for Councilperson here, the Councilperson, Councilperson Winters', um, motion. Second time again?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilperson Lightfoot Ward. So it was moved by Councilperson Winters, it was second by Councilperson Lightfoot Ward. Um, this is for Councilperson, Councilperson Winters is, um, motion. Uh, Madam Clerk, may I please have roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilperson Winters.
Yes?
Councilperson Lightfoot Ward.
Yes.
Councilperson Urbom.
No.
Vice Mayor Martin.
No.
Mayor Nicosson. Mayor Nigerson?
Read your, read your conditions again one more time, Councilperson Winters?
Your conditions are compensation, I'm sorry, participation requirements. Every three months or quarter, you're required to perform one, either town hall, major project, or a public-facing events, with a minimum requirement per year of four events. But it's not limited to four, you can do more than four events. Remember, the next one is going to be accountability and deductions. For missing a regular council meeting, a ten percent salary deduction is taken from that amount. For not performing one of your quarterly duties of bringing the neighbors together, is a twenty percent salary deduction amount. But no official shall receive a rate below three thousand dollars per year if they miss all of these requirements. Next is the emergency budget clause, which in a catastrophic or unforeseen budget shortfall, any necessary reduction shall first be applied to the compensation and discretionary budgets, sorry, first applied to compensation amount of the mayor, vice mayor, and councilpersons before considering custody essential service. I didn't mean to say budgets, because we're not talking about budgets today. And of course, the last one would be equal compensation among all elected officials, so there is no, it does not encourage getting better place in office through some money, but rather through the character of yourself and how much you want to give to the community.
Just a quick point of work. For number one, the one where you said having the events and things like that, you first originally spoke about that, and I know I have my vote coming up, you first originally spoke about that considering discretionary raising up. But now that we're not discussing that, so would this still be in place regardless of discretionary remains the same or not?
Let's just say that most events you can do, you can do on a small budget.
Okay.
And we've done that before, and of course, town halls can be done inside of this area without having to pay rental fees, as long as we're doing something for the community. It would be nice to have larger events by having a budget, but since we don't have that, we can do smaller events, which should still work with the community.
And so part of your argument be that with, I mean, this level of compensation, the discretionary wouldn't really have to change, you should be able to take it out of this level of compensation if this level of compensation would pass anyway?
I am understanding of that you, that we're saying to take it out of the compensation. I think though, your town hall, your major project, your public facing, should still come out of your discretionary fund. But if you are lacking or not able to fulfill one every three months, then it will come out of your personal salary, so that you're keeping actively involved.
When you mean major project, like what, like what, what do you mean by major project? Because if there's a major, like what's, what's considered as major? And if there's not enough projects to go around, then the person, if they can't find a major project, can they get punished for that?
Is there another type of, of project you would like to use in this place?
Well, what consider, what would you consider a major project? Like, so everybody has to do a major project once a quarter, whatever?
Well, we have a lot of citizens that go out and take canoes, and they will go and pick up trash in the river. It's a project, right?
Okay. I think the word major wasn't my throw on me, but I understand what you're saying there.
But something to be involved with the community, or something that benefits the community is what we want. It doesn't have to be public-facing event, as long as you're taking care of it. Like when our vice mayor was collecting diapers for the kids that needed them. These are a major project that you need to take care of other people or people in your neighborhood. So taking on a responsibility, whether it's facing or non-facing.
All right, Clerk Jacoby, um... No, no, she's there, she's just waiting for me to say my, she's waiting for me to say my answer, because I'm just torn. Clerk Jacoby, I'll vote, uh... Councilperson Winters is outside of the box a little bit. Clerk Jacoby, I'll vote.
Mayor, while you're deciding, it's a pointed order, just to clarify what you're voting on. Is it your intention, Councilperson Winters, that if someone's unable to attend a meeting, but they are excused, or if they're ill, that they would still be docked, because that's not fair?
What is your point in the legal aspect of that?
Just to clarify, I'm not saying this way it ought to be, I'm just trying to clarify what the proposal is. You said that people would be docked salary if they miss a meeting, and my question is, is that for any purpose? If someone's ill, if they're excused, or just if they miss unexcused? It's just unclear what it is that the proposal is, so I'm trying to clarify while just having...
Would you propose that we allow a PTO day?
I'm not proposing anything, sir. You propose, or your colleagues propose, I'm simply trying to clarify what the proposal is and when it applies.
I think the one council meeting a month should easily be taken care of. If there is an emergency, like a valid emergency, I think that can be excused. You know, if you're in the hospital for some medical emergency, you got a car accident. Obviously, these are valid reasons, and we should always conclude emergencies in that.
All right, so, um...
Mr. Mayor, can I...
No, no, yeah, unfortunately, that was...
Things changed from that original proposal, that was no...
Yeah, I know, but unfortunately, yeah, I understand. All right, um...
What's in question is the conditions he's putting?
No, no, I mean, he has the conditions and they're in.
Okay, I think that's disgusting, I...
No, no, they're, they're, they're kind of, yeah, they're kind of disgusting, I'm just, I'm, I'm personally torn. I'm gonna make a vote right now, within twenty seconds. Still not Jacoby. I'll make a vote right now, I'll just, the last thing I'll say is, Councilperson Winters, this could be an innovative idea that may work, but it could be a huge debacle. And there's a lot of money involved.
Well, do you want to add something?
So, no, I was just gonna say, the good thing about this, I think, is, the good thing about government is, is that if this seems to go in a way where it's like it's not working out for whatever plethora of reasons, I will definitely bring this back for a future resolution to do a new resolution under new conditions, for sure. I don't know, Winters? With that being said, Clerk Jacoby, um... Feel my chance, oh yes, yes, Clerk Jacoby.
Motion passes three to two.
All right, you guys, Madam Manager, your report...
Mayor, you've amended the original proposal, you have to vote on it as amended.
So we're voting on the amended, amended portion of the G five?
It was amended offered to the original, what was...
So we're voting that through for the amendment?
You voted for the amendment, you now have to vote on the matter as...
On the matter as amended, all right, so we're gonna, do I have a motion for the matter as amended? Second, moved by Councilperson Lightfoot Ward, second by Councilperson Winters. Madam Clerk, roll call for the actual motion.
Councilperson Winters?
Yes?
Councilperson, uh, Lightfoot Ward?
Yes.
I can't hear her.
She said yes, she said yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, Councilperson Erbong?
No.
Vice Mayor Martin?
No.
Mayor Nigerson?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
Um, Madam Manager, give a quick...
I have it, yes. Legislative twenty twenty-five ended, and the village was successful in obtaining one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars in non-matching one-time appropriation for the Village of El Portel Police Department renovation. My initial request was for nine hundred thousand dollars. But we, I guess we'd have it that we had it placed in the, in the budget, and so we will be utilizing the one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars to try to reconfigure some office space in the police department. So we're happy about that. Can we clap? In September, Senator Chevron Jones will be giving the presentation, I'm sure he'll talk more about that. I do wanna alert everyone that the village's Green Round to School Phase Three project is alive and active again. It was on pause for the past two years, but through your efforts this evening with passing the resolution that allows for the, the planting of eighty trees along the west side for our Green Walk to School Phase Three. This project has been going on since twenty fourteen, and we planted trees over the course of several, several years. But as we move forward, we didn't have that opportunity for the last two years because of a government, or county contractor. But now we're back in business, and we're happy to have those done, and we will have those done by November. We have fixed, successfully fixed a road hazard at Northwest Eighty-Sixth Street. Losi came out to fix that worming break that was on Northwest Ninety, or Eighty-Sixth Street, and that was a light for us, a problem over the last five months. But due to the efforts of Mayor Nigerson, and the police chief, and the police officers, and, I mean, almost every department, just trying to get some help, we were able to address that, and that was repaired today. As you notice, our Todd Lot is under renovation already. We're hopeful and aiming for a reopening with brand-new play amenities for our residents and visitors, hopefully by the beginning of September. The nature park is open, the exercise equipment has been installed successfully, and it is ready for all residents and visitors who are ready to start their fitness routine outdoors. The Forestman Middle School Safety Roundabout will, will start our project again. That was an item that passed today where we selected our contractor roadway construction, and we will be getting started on that, that project is slated to be completed by December. And we have a lot of different things going on in the village, there's always something. But we, we keep moving, we keep grinding, and we're, we'll be reaching out to everyone very soon with budget proposal from myself and the Chief Financial Officer to discuss priorities. But you know that we're gonna pretty much stay conservative, as we have due to recommendations or requirements, I should say, from our independent auditors. So we'll be having, you can check out my July twenty twenty-five Village Manager's Report on the village website. And if you ever have any questions, you always feel free to email me or comment. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Madam Manager. You guys see part of my report there, if you have any questions, everybody has my contact information. Attorney Geller, any reports?
Dustin Adams, the mayor, who we discussed.
Thank you very good. Last good...
Answer any questions, Madam?
Thank you very much. Last good and well, for this is the time where anybody can talk about anything at all. Oh, Councilperson Winters, in the beginning, you had something to say about herbicides. But any residents can come up right now and say your name and address for the record, and you can discuss anything at all.
George Alvarez at one six five Northwest Eighty-Eighth Street. I probably would have gotten up to speak a little bit earlier had that amendment to these proposed pay increase not been made. So, uh, I'm not Attorney Geller, he is knowledgeable, I am not the mayor, who is both knowledgeable and very hardworking and deserving of a raise, honestly, and you all are. However, the process that I just saw, you guys just gave yourselves, what's seventy times five? Three hundred thirty thousand dollars on an amended proposal that was noticed to us a few days ago in a different form. I don't recall it being talked about in a budget committee, in an appropriations discussion setting. You know, every time a municipality spends a lot of money, it's either already in their code, in their charter, for a certain official to do so. It's usually our, in this case, our very competent city manager, also very hardworking, noticed. Why we're not, why we're not using a third party to assess what the values should be? Like, there was a system in what the mayor set. I can't disagree with it, I don't know, maybe it's right, maybe it's wrong, I do, I can guess you deserve something, especially from three K. Perhaps Councilperson Winters' math was correct, there are a couple points that I would disagree on, including the eggs. But that needs to be vetted by professionals. When we talk about massive expenditures in... Our money. Our money, that needs to go through a process and not to willingly approve on a rainy Tuesday night and add it to on some other proposal. Now, apparently, the fact that it was done means that it was legal to do so. Congratulations, El Portel has been outsmarted by El Portel. So, I would like, and I, you know, I, I, I guess I could call Attorney Geller, I guess I could call you, Mr. Mayor, to find out why this did not go through a budget committee meeting? When is our last budget committee meeting? When did we have a budget committee meeting that discussed a significant raise from three thousand to nearly seventy thousand a year? El Portel already has, I believe it is the second or third highest millage rate in Miami-Dade County. Property tax from the Cavista building, we're spending it already. I, I have real trouble with what just happened here tonight. I think, and I'm hoping that maybe one of you will join me, I think we need to put forth, whether it is a village-wide referendum or a proposal, a cogent and even proposal, in the same way we, we did, we did so with Mrs. Campbell's variance, where we now, for lack of a better word, undo what was just done by the council. So I would urge all of you to look into your hearts. I know you work hard, I know you guys deserve more than three K a year. But let's not get involved into sophistry when we compare ourselves with Ventura of eighty thousand residents, or North Miami of over a hundred twenty thousand residents. There is a reason El Portel is El Portel. Our needs are smaller, and while we are growing, and while we should be growing and should be embracing development and planning for the future, we need to do this in an even-handed way. The same way that we should not burden our streets with multifamily developments on Northeast Ninetieth Street with no sewers, we should not be overburdening our taxpayers. You guys are gonna vote on a millage rate increase, right? That's how this works.
What about a millage rate?
The, the point still stands. So I, I appreciate the work you guys do, but I hope that one of you, because I'll reach out to all of you, will consider writing some legislation, for the lack of a better word, I apologize to anybody who's been to law school. This should have a far more thoroughly-vetted public forum. This should have a third party, probably a publicly-vetted third party to make decisions like this. Our tax base is barely over two million dollars, and we just spent nearly four hundred thousand... Our tax base is barely over two million dollars and we just spent nearly four hundred thousand of it.
Sir, I hate to interrupt, but just informational for you. Say you're gonna reach out to everyone, but according to Robert's rules, when a motion is passed, in order for it to be reconsidered, the motion, any motion for reconsider, doesn't mean it has to be, but if someone chooses to bring one, it can only be brought by someone on the prevailing side of the motion. People who voted against the motion don't get to say, "I still think we should think about this again."
Correct.
It has to be brought.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Attorney Geller. Thank you so much.
It guides you in conducting whatever you're gonna do.
Everybody deserves a raise around here. Everybody's very knowledgeable, works very hard. I think we gotta do this a better way. I think the citizens deserve that. So, talk soon. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just as a motion for reconsideration is, can be brought at the same meeting or the immediately following meeting. However, that's not to say that what the mayor said is not also correct, because just 'cause you adopt something doesn't mean whether it's formally reconsidered or not. It, the topic is always live to come back and, and look at again and that can be brought by anybody. So just, just to clarify.
I, I will probably reach out to you as well, Attorney, if you don't mind, because, uh, this is, I, I am not as savvy as this process requires. But, but ju, I mean, ju, ju, to your point, this is not just a resolution that we can put a resolution upon a resolution. It's a multitude of resolutions. Some of the things that Councilperson Winters mentioned, how do we enforce them? Or we get to hire an ombudsman? Are we gonna, are we gonna get, are we gonna get the code enforcement person, a code enforcement assistant, to make sure that every council member is putting forth their best efforts? And how can we prove that a, a, a group of canoes is somehow in the best interest, just to borrow the canoe phrase, of the residents of El Portel? I mean, we will be canoeing down streets that don't have sewers. Thank you for your time.
I, I do have a comment. Uh, you're, you're not wrong. You're, you're definitely not wrong. Uh, I think what happens tonight is part of the reason why sometimes people find local government very frustrating. Um, and when you're reaching out and you're sending all those emails and when you're telling the story, I do want you to accurately reflect what happened. Councilman Winters is the one that proposed this outside number, um, that differs greatly from what it was that was published. And I want you to also memorialize the fact that Councilman Urbom and myself, although there's definitely a benefit in it for us, we said no, because in some way we understand that, um, what happened tonight didn't necessarily feel right. And the process that you're proposing is what I was harkening to and I said, "There should be an increase, but what is the increase?" It should be a process that is contemplative of involving our CFO and involving our residents to come up with what that number is. I do not know. I, Councilman Winters came up with sixty seven thousand dollars and so vehemently, um, drove the discussion towards that number towards the end, when initially we were trying to vote on the item as it appeared. But I hope you and all of your residents and friends that you can speak to can approach Councilman Winters and find out what the source was for that, that number that he put forth. Uh, so I do want you to accurately reflect the, the record and in addition to that, I want you to know that not everybody on this day is, is self-interested. Not everybody on this day is, is only thinking about that number. Some of us are thinking about the process and I think the process matters. I've been proud of a lot of work that we've done in El Portel and a lot of the things we've done here. There's really, really good things that drive our community forward. This is the first night that it has given me pause, my membership in this one. Um, so I do want that reflected on the record, although there is obviously a benefit. It is not one that I voted for to receive, uh, and neither did Councilman Urbom.
Thank you very much, my vice mayor. Um, anyone else from the council?
We're still in Goodwill Fairness?
Uh, yes.
Uh, yes, so, um, so I just wanna remind everybody that, um, you need to find out who the white people are in your lives and figure out the side of everything they're on, all right? If anybody wants to learn fifty jokes about murdering black people, uh, you can come talk to me. I learned them all by the time I was ten. Uh, we have a real serious problem here and not the least of which is we have a governor, DeSantis, who's a coward, who used eminent domain, okay, to take land from Miami-Dade County and put a freaking torture prison in the middle of the Everglades. So, uh, I'm excited that my property values are going up right now, but I see a cliff in front of everything in this country and we are headed right off of it. So do not forget for even half a moment that you have a governor right now who's willing to take land, take property, all right? So that's happening right now. Great news. Um, Florida continues to be the laughing stock of the country. Um, I hope there's enough billionaire, uh, uh, immigrants, I guess, um, to support the economy here in Miami. But, um, I have great concerns for the future economy of the state. Uh, it's, uh, I, I've worked twenty summers in Miami, twenty, all right, more, and, uh, this is different. This is different. Uh, everyone's, "Oh, it's summer, it's slow, it's summer, it's slow, it's summer, it's slow." Let me explain something, guys. There's never been a summer like this. We usually rely on European tourists of one sort or another that both of the economy through the summer months. They're not coming. It's partially to do with the dollar-to-euro exchange rate, but it's more to do with the fact that nobody from outside this country wants anything to do with this country right now. Uh, that's the, that's the larger problem, okay? So, uh, so there's still gonna be billionaires and wannabe billionaires flushing cash down the toilet in Miami-Dade County, parking money in real estate, uh, using it as a savings account. So, uh, you know, I hold a real estate license. I'll be fine. Um, I'm gonna keep making money in real estate for time immemorial here in Miami-Dade County. But the average person living and working in Miami-Dade County, uh, it, there's no, there's no hope in sight. Uh, we're prospectless, um, until things change. So you guys need to figure out who the white people are in your lives and understand exactly where they're at in this situation. And don't take it with a grain of salt of the governor, who is a coward, uh, absolutely eminent domain land from the county you live in to build a torture prison. So.
Very much. Very much.
So I'd like to address Mr. Alvarez's concerns from earlier. So the first thing is this egg. I heard two people speak about it. I did thorough research on everything I gave tonight. I did all the numbers, not by motion. The thirteen dollars per dozen figure comes from a nationwide survey reported by Business Insider in March twenty five. I wrote it down, so you can go look it up. I'm not making up stuff. So Business Insider in March twenty five, using data record, data collected from major grocery stores across Houston, found the highest reported price was exactly thirteen dollars at Fucow. This means that it was not a local guess. It was a verified national high. So this is real-world data I'm working with here. Next thing, when I came up with this nine point one percent, it wasn't just pulling out random numbers. We looked at both restaurants. We looked at groceries. We looked at a vehicle cost six thousand dollars. We looked at all these percentages and I came up with nine point one percent per year. So if this was nineteen ninety-three, would you be standing up here and saying, "Well, you guys wanted a twenty-seven dollar raise. That was nine point one percent"? How dare you? Well, this is thirty-three years later without one raise. Nothing is happening to the council. You know, it's not gonna even stand for next two years. Ten years from now, that price could be over a hundred thousand dollars, but we're not gonna be there. There might be another ten, twenty, thirty years before they make another move on this council. We are basically just keeping up with inflation. If I actually wanted to go with the route that I think is worth, I think we're at a hundred thirty thousand dollars because we're doubling our population, we're doubling our work. But I'm not gonna suggest it. I exist. I always suggested that we went with the amount where the inflation is currently at. Again, you know, no other municipality is doing this like this that I know of, where you're basically sticking it to the council people and the mayor and the vice mayor and saying, "You gotta be openly involved in your community or you're gonna get deductions." And I think this is very important and I'm glad it passed, 'cause it's basically to create a precedent for the rest of the country to say, "Hey, look, El Portel did this." And those people that are just getting the government for a paycheck or to become a lobbyist, beware, 'cause you need to be involved in your city. So this is where we came to the, this is where I came and I presented to the council. I spoke fifteen minutes because I spent the last four days since I got this resolution working on it. My wife's like, "Where am I? Where are you?" I'm like, "Every single day. I wake up, I worked on this project and I went to sleep with it in my hands." So we came to this place and it passed three to two, so it was a very close call. But are we looking at something above the rest of the cities? Are we looking over eighty thousand in Miami? Are we looking over eighty-nine thousand in, in North Miami? Are we looking over these other cities that are making more? No, we're, we're, we're below that price still. So I hope you understand that we're not doing this for any other reason, that we're trying to promote, um, engagement with the community and hopefully this will allow that to happen.
Councilperson Winters, um, anybody else?
There are multiple ways to promote civic engagement that don't involve this much of an increase. And I think it's, it's disingenuous and I think it is not a good and honest place to start to make it appear as though the only reason why this was proposed tonight was in some way to benefit the residents. Because I'm sure if we put our heads together around, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, we can think of community spaces. We could think of maybe hiring an events firm to talk about the events that we want executed. And we signed up for the three thousand dollars, right? We signed up for this job and ran with this three thousand dollars. I, I think that if you want to have an honest conversation, it's a good, it's a good idea to start from an honest place that doesn't insult people's intelligence. Um, and that's my last comment on it.
Thank you, my vice mayor. Um, Councilperson Winters, I don't know if you wanna respond on that, but I'm gonna with Councilperson, I mean, with, uh, Mr. Alvarez, real quick. Uh, say your name and address for the record again, sir.
I'm George Alvarez, one six five Northwest Eighty Eighth Street. Councilperson Winters' numbers may be accurate. They may be numbers that a third party, a qualified third-party accounting agency who deals with municipal law says, "Oh, this is perfectly reasonable." They may also says that, "You know what? Eggs were thirteen dollars a dozen." They may do that. I didn't see it. You guys can ask yourselves internally if you saw eggs at thirteen thousand dollars or thirteen, you know what I'm saying, thirteen, thirteen bucks a dozen regularly? Could be. You might be right. In fact, all of you guys probably could be counted on coming up with a pretty excellent system, a pretty good accounting rubric by which you could come up with a number and say that your work is worth that number. So Councilperson Winters, your numbers may very well be right, but I find it extremely hard to believe that this was something that was just, because, you know what? We didn't hear anything about this. This was not noticed. And, and Councilperson Winters, you spoke indeed for at least fifteen minutes with all kinds of information, all sorts of facts that none of us could check in the moment. And you're a smart guy and I don't doubt that you had your best intentions in doing so, but I find it very hard to believe that one councilperson just heard about this and another councilperson came up with twenty minutes of information about why you guys should get a sixty-seven thousand dollar a year rate. How come one councilperson didn't really know this was happening tonight and other councilpeople had an extremely well-prepared justification for a raise that the residents of El Portel didn't hear a damn thing about? And then other councilpeople had to kinda weigh the options on the fly. Look, politics is hard. You guys have hard jobs and you deserve to be compensated adequately for them. But this is a slap in the face to the residents of El Portel. This is three hundred fifty thousand dollars. I don't know, or is this also gonna go into Florida state pension funds? Are we gonna be paying twenty percent on top of that? So it's not just three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Let's add forty percent to your pension funds. That's great. Maybe you guys deserve it. I don't know how it works, but the point is every member of El Portel should hear what the numbers are. And those numbers include whatever revenue we're supposed to get from, uh, the Cavista. And let's face it, the flow buildings, Adam Newman's flow buildings, when are they gonna get a C about ten years from now? There's no sewers over there. There's no electric over there. There's no roads over there. Adam Newman cannot flush his toilet unless we get involved and pay for the infrastructure for that. And then eventually, with the help of hopefully Miami-Dade County, then eventually he'll get a C of O and then maybe we'll get some revenue. I may not know how everything works, but I know how a couple things work. So I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put you out of your misery right now and I mean that in the kindest, gentlest way, but I do think that this process is facata. Spanish translation, sir? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alvarez. All right, so let me just say a couple things. First of all, so when, um, when any new property's going over there, they're gonna tie it to the sewage that's from Biscayne. Same way the Cavista apartments did. They tied it to the sewage from Biscayne and brought it down Eighty Third. And he's even closer, 'cause he's right on Biscayne, so he'll have no problem in bringing that sewage right, right from the street, right in front of him. So we don't have to provide him with sewage. He's gonna, he's gonna just tie it right there, right next door to him right from Biscayne. He's just gonna bring it into his property. Same way Cavista brought it all the way down from Biscayne, all the way down Eighty Third, um, for the Cavista. So we don't have to do anything for that. Um, I don't disagree with you, but what I will say is that a couple of things, when you say it, it wasn't noticed, it went out to everyone on Friday. Noticed like everything else, like everything else was noticed, like every other, like, you know, Ms. Georgette's, um, you know, item and everything else over here was noticed. It was all noticed.
Not the amendment, not the amendment.
No, I understand what you're saying, but, but the item was noticed. It was amended within. It's the same way, like, so let me just say this. And I understand what you're saying. Like I said, I don't disagree with you, but it's the same way, the reason why it's different is because it's a big shock. There's a lot of money involved. And I'm still not easy with that. I'm gonna back up my mind, but.
Well, then I'll work with you about next, next.
I got it. But, but, but as far as, but I, I don't want the mayor to get out there that amendments on resolutions is something that was just created now. When Ms. Georgette first came with her thing, she came and then Councilperson Winters said, "Oh, I have roofing materials." "Oh, we can do," so we adjusted it in real time. So it all, uh, things are usually adjusted, but it's just that this thing was so big that this adjustment is something that stands out. But things are always adjusted with conditions. We pass things with conditions all the time, from what the resolution is, when it's first advertised and it first goes out. It comes to us, whether it's a new site, a new home, a new site theme, whether, whatever the resolution is, we, we pass things with adjustments all the time, Councilperson.
Mrs. Campbell's variance did go to planning and zoning and it was vetted by our third-party corridor group.
First of all, first of all.
I'm sorry.
No, I got, I got you. No, you're good, you're good, Mr. Alvarez. One second, one second, Attorney Geller. First of all, let me just say this. Attorney Geller, you're gonna come in in a second. But let me just say this. Yes, it did, because for anything that's like a site plan or roof variance, stuff like that, it has to go through planning and zoning. In our charter, under compensation reimbursement for expenses, says councilperson shall receive annual compensation in amount, in, in, in amount prescribed. That's the first line of the resolution. That, it doesn't say that it has to be done in like a certain format, the way that our building department says, if you come for a roof variance, you have to submit to the corridor group. You have to go through planning and zoning committee. You have to, for anything where it comes to council compensation, it's through resolution, agenda item. It's through annual compensation in amount prescribed. The council shall receive compensation, a reimbursement, in accordance with applicable law, or as may otherwise be provided for authorized travel and per diem also for reimbursement incurred and performance of their official duties. So, and that's what it says. So, so it just has to be, so like any other resolution or any other, uh, agenda item, it has to be, you know, put out there on Thursday or Friday or whatever. It's, it's gonna be on the thing for a meeting and then it comes and gets presented as a meeting. I don't disagree with you about the amendment and I'm I don't disagree with you about the amendment, and I'm still uneasy about it, so I probably want, I probably want you to talk to him.
You'll agree with me that it was easier to approve four hundred thousand, four hundred forty thousand dollar yearly compensation and pension to yourselves than it was to get a roof on Mrs. Campbell's house?
Mr. Alvarez.
I should, I should leave, 'cause I really like you, and I'm so hot right now.
You're good, you're good, you're good. You can say, look, people, people get upset at me all the time. But what I'm telling you is, is that for the process, the process wasn't done illegally, and I think that's where I kinda just wanna get across.
Still wasn't right.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, alright? Okay. Anybody else? Oh, go ahead, Attorney Miller.
Just again, for the record, what has to be noticed is a topic. The idea that something is going to be discussed, and a topic is coming up, that must be noticed so anyone interested in the topic knows that they have to come and talk about it. The fact that amendments are committed, and I'm speaking generally, I wanna be clear, I'm not necessarily addressing this one particular issue, but speaking generally, the fact that there may be amendments to a topic people are on notice, that it doesn't necessarily have to pass exactly the way it was proposed. Now, there are limits to that, and I'm not commenting on this particular one, whether it's subject to it. Generally speaking, the idea that it may be an amendment is supposed to be understood when you advertise that a topic is gonna be discussed, that's considered public.
There is the spirit, there is the letter.
Thank you very much, Attorney Miller.
I'm certainly not commenting, I do not comment on the wisdom of what the council does. The council makes its decisions based on their wisdom, that's why they're elected. I'm just trying to set out parameters and guidelines, and the council acts within.
Thank you very much, Attorney Miller, I appreciate it. Anybody else? Good and welcome?
I'd like to address some of those points of misinformation. First, there was no paid raise. This was on the consent agenda, it did go out to the community ahead of time. The community who read the pay raise saw that it was there, they knew that there was gonna be a discussion on it. It is not our job to go to the door and knock on it and say, "Hey, did you know we're gonna do this today?" It was sent out to everyone, okay? That's the first important point. This is not on the fly. Second is that, you mentioned a pension over and over again. There is no pension. I don't get a pension, these guys don't get a pension. We don't get a car allowance, the other cities get car allowance, we don't get secretaries, we don't get anything extra.
Point of clarification, there is something you get in the mail, it's titled FPS, you will find it in the mail, it is a pension program specifically for the council members here in El Portel, set up by the previous mayor.
How much is the pension for?
I don't know, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know like the details of what the contribution is, the last statement I read, I'm not, I'm not gonna say, I have my statements, I can bring them in, so you can at least calculate the percentage, but I mean, it's a nominal percentage in terms of, in terms of contribution from the village, but there is a contribution from the village in addition to monies that are set aside from our compensation into a, would be considered a pension account.
Can either manager, mayor, or lawyer?
Is the FR, is the FRS for returns?
FRS, I'm sorry, what did I say? I said FPS? What, yeah, FRS.
Can one of you tell me what this pension is, because I am not familiar with it?
I can tell you that all of the staff is in FRS, including me, I don't have...
Not staff, the elected officials.
Including me, as it says, and so...
They have quarterly statements.
Right, and I don't have your information, I don't know, but we can get that for you if you'd like to.
Or we can, or if I've received anything. Where they would send this to my mail, where they send it to the house right here, and I have no direct election over or valid paper work on this.
We can look into it and continue whatever we think that tomorrow, when I, when the office administrators send it.
Alright, well, I'm gonna have to shut now, sorry.
Anybody else?
Hearing none. The council meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, oh, do I have most adjourned?
No, I have one more thing.
Okay, go ahead, Councilperson.
So, as the mound has had no lawn service for a few months, it turned into a Chia Pet area full of ground, and we had it cut down, again, back to normal height, and we had, some residents were completely against it, as the lawnmowers cut too close to the Indian, the habitat sites where they were buried, and dug up some of the dirt. But one of the things that the residents told me is that there are these big bald spots around each tree of just patches of dirt, and he said that they were spraying something around the dirt. And of course, in our, we have a policy here in El Portel that you passed that says we're not allowed to have herbicides, is correct?
No.
No?
No, it's pesticides.
Pesticides, okay.
And that prohibition is for a third-party vendor, a commercial contractor who would be performing work for the village, essentially on village driveway or village property. Residents do not have the same prohibition.
And I'm sorry, I missed the...
Perfect, yeah, go ahead.
In twenty-twenty-one, we passed the, we built a program, it's called the Integrated Pest Management Program, to eliminate or reduce pesticide/herbicide applications on village properties to the maximum extent feasible. So we did pass that, and when I issued the RFP for lawn services and maintenance and arborist services, that was a part of the language that was included. Our arborist landscaping firm, that's Green Junes Paradise, only uses the herbicide that you have the certificate for. Our, this is a herbicide use is out of necessity to control landscaping and weeding, which is required, we do need the weeding where possible. It is used countywide, it is approved by the state, and it is also approved under our MS four, NPDES, that's the National Politic Discharge and Mentality System that we are required to report on monthly, quarterly, and yearly, and it is all within those allowable items in order to manage landscaping and weeding.
So, as grass is very difficult to grow in shared forests, we already know, this mound is built ninety percent of weeds, and using weed killers, herbicides, have big, very large bald spots on the mound. I would like to request that the landscaping company just stop using the herbicide on the mound, and let's see if it grows back in those sections. If it doesn't, we can go back to it, and let's give it some time to come back to life.
I can certainly make that request, thank you, that's no problem.
Thank you very much. Anybody else still? Finally, do I have most adjourned?
Some of them.
Moved by Vice Mayor Martin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Urbom, on behalf of say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a name. Hearing none. The regular council meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five is adjourned at nine twenty PM.